Oh yeah, that bunch of them?
Yeah.
We are on.
Okay, yes.
Welcome everyone to this workshop, this evening's presentation by Ryan. Here Charlie is going to update us on the special ed circumstances within our schools. And it's always a challenging task for us to balance the needs of special ed and the needs of our regular students. There are laws that regulate what we have to do in regards to special ed and Ryan will educate us on that for those that need a little update. Having been through this since...
Eons.
Yeah, eons ago. Bonnie and I actually are quite familiar with the requirements of special ed and the burden that it places on this community. We are a service community for special ed particularly. We attract, because we do it very well, we attract those in need and service those as the very best that we can. Again, it is our responsibility, the school committee, to balance those needs and those demands against our ability to educate the regular student population and provide services for them as well. Keeping that in mind, as you hear this presentation, we have responsibilities to all the students in Auburn. No one group gets, should be getting preferential treatment. We do a great deal internally managing the needs of our students. We have programs that are generally not available at others, at other high schools to service our particular student needs and the special ed needs. There are those that we are not able to service and therefore we place those outside the district where needed. We have programs that are regional that we also host to manage some students. And I'm taking some of Ryan's explanation here, but I'm going to do that anyway.
Yes, you are, John.
Just so everyone knows, at least I have something going on here and I remember what happened every once in a while. Haven't lost my mind entirely. But there's, again, it's a balance. And we as a committee are charged with maintaining that balance so that we service all the students of Auburn. And we are getting a presentation tonight about one segment of that student population. So I will turn it over to either Katie or Ryan, whoever wants to jump on my foot right now. Go for it.
That would be me. No.
There you go. All right, thanks everybody. I was asked to come tonight to talk about special education and particularly to kind of address the question of special ed out of district programming and what programs do we currently offer in the district? And are there opportunities to service more of our students in district programs? So before I do that, I want to give you a little bit of background. So, you know, we are, I think our overall student population is right around 3,600. So we service at the moment, right now, 675 special education students. And you have your, you have the presentation as well, you can take notes on that as well. That number can fluctuate anywhere between 650 to 700. Right now, we're landing at 675, which is 19 percent. This time last year, we were at 19.1.
That's a good thing.
It's a slight reduction. Yes, that's a good thing. The state average is, hovers right around 17 percent. You know, we're considered one of the big five, so Portland, Auburn, Lewiston, you know, Sanford, Bedford. So, and we have a tendency to be over the state average. Smaller communities, where I used to work in Wazakunkwet, we were at 11.7 percent identified. So it's a very, you know, our, the nature of our community is reflected in our numbers.
Okay.
So, these are the identification categories that we currently have, that we serve. So autism, students with emotional disturbance, hearing impairment, intellectual disabilities, multiple disabilities. Multiple disabilities is taking one of the other categories, two of them, putting them together. Orthopedic impairment, other health impairment, specific learning disability, speech, language, traumatic brain injury. So this is just a flavor. These are not all of the potential areas that your students can be identified, but these are the areas in which we serve. The biggest being specific learning disability, that has the largest number of students. You know, students with other health impairments typically encompasses, for the most part, students with ADHD that might be impacting their education, and then multiple disabilities. And we'd also have a large population with students with emotional disturbance.
Are these the categories that are currently in-house?
These are the categories of students that we service in the district as a whole, whether in-house or out of district.
Okay, thank you.
Right. So this is our current, our staffing numbers. One special ed director, one special services coordinator. We have seventeen leaders, we have forty-four special ed teachers, and seven speech and language clinicians, one BCBA, which is a board certified behavioral analyst. Oh, I guess Scott Laubert? Okay.
You ought to sit closer.
Yeah, so, and then we have seventy-eight ed techs and 1.5 secretaries as well. So, so the basics. So tonight's conversation really is about the LRE, which is, that stands for the least restrictive environment. So when students become eligible for special education, there's a continuum. So think of a, a big line. And so students, you know, best case scenario is when they come into the special ed, they're coming in with a simple consultation. They're in a typical classroom with other students and all they receive is maybe thirty minutes or fifteen minutes a month of consultation from a special ed teacher to the teacher. Right, that is your, the bare minimum of, of a service delivery model. And so that's at the beginning. And we would love all students to start there. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. It depends on the need. So from there, you would go up to add some, starting to add services in the classroom, so in-classroom support, whether it be reading support or whatever the type of support is. And then from there, you start to get more restrictive, right? So you start to pull the students out. Maybe you'll service them in a small group setting for reading instruction or writing instruction, and then maybe they need that for more than one content area. And so our responsibility as a public school district is to provide the LRE and to provide FAPE, or Free Appropriate Public Education, within the parameters, and the, and the federal government sets out the parameters in IDEA, what's, what are the laws? And then within, within the state of Maine, we follow those laws in MUSER, which outlines from the, from child find obligation to referral to evaluation, all the way through, through IEP program development. So we have students all across that continuum. And so what we do in special ed and what I do, and as a director, is to constantly check in where our kids at on that continuum and how are they doing on that continuum? What types of supports are we providing? So, so when we think about our students in out of district placements, by and large, and not all the time, but by and large, we have a tendency to think about students that might need more behavioral support. So, but what, what support do we provide to our students when they're still in our schools? So we have, and you'll get a presentation from Jillian Close, our BCBA, and from our consultant, Jennifer Butterworth, I think at the next board meeting, they're going to come in. And they're going to be talking about the supports that they provide, what we call tier one and tier two support. So these are students, when we think about their behaviors, we try to group them, and there's a pyramid here. And so eighty percent typically is what can be serviced in tier one support, so they'll talk about the check-in, checkout system. Tier two is a little bit more specific to maybe a small groups of kids. And then tier three, the top of that triangle, are the, are the individualized needs of students. So within that, so we provide the consultation support. You know, if students might need a little bit more, we, we can provide through a consent to evaluate a functional behavior assessment, which looks at what's the targeted behavior of concern, right? What's our hypothesis about what causes that behavior? And then what replacement behaviors can be put in place? And then from there, we put in an individualized, what we call tier three support plan, which would be a behavior plan. So, and then from there, you know, if, if those, if those mechanisms aren't being effective, then they'll consult with me and say, hey, Ryan, I think this child needs more support. And then what I do, I come back and say, okay, what's the, what's your behavior plan? Where's your data? You know, what are, what are your IEP goals around that? What are, what are the supports that you put, have put in place? And I have really, really, really hounded that a lot in the, in the year and a half I've been here. And, and just to let you know, so far this year, and it's, and it happens, you have unanticipated out of district placements, which are placements that you haven't budgeted for. So I'm going to get to it in a little bit, but other than our incoming, other than our kindergarten students, we've only had a place, outplace so far this year, one student. Because we are adhering to this process and, and really going back to our staff and saying, how can we support you more? What other supports can be put in place? And how do you know what you've put in place is working or isn't working? So when you really ask those questions, is what have you already done? And, you know, how do you know that it's effective? Oftentimes when people will come back to me and say, okay, I need to do a little bit more. And so we do that and we're being effective. We're starting to see that be effective. So in addition to that, so then we have in our elementary, particular elementary levels, we have a detailed referral process that all of our team leaders know for referrals to the BI program, which is at Sherwood Heights. So, so our BI program is our behavioral classrooms. We have three behavior classrooms at Sherwood Heights Elementary School. BI one serves K to two, and then BI two, sometimes two, three, and four, and then BI five, BI three, four, five, six. So each of those classrooms have eight students in them, or can take up to eight students in them. So they have a teacher and two ed tech supports as well. And then we meet, we meet monthly. So we'll review applications to the program if there are any, and we'll see how kids are doing within that program. So the last year and a half, we've been really successful on keeping the students in the programs or being able to try to, you know, put them back into, with their non-disabled peers, really kind of go down the, the LRE continuum, not go up. And then from there, we have, one of the things that I've added since the time I've been here, I've added an additional level of behavioral support through BHPs, which are behavior health professionals. They have a bachelor's degree, fifty hours of, of behavioral health training, and we brought them through Connections for Kids, which is an organization that we have contracted with called CFK. And they can work through the students' main care, if they have main care. And so then we pay the seat on that. So that's been effective. So when we look, when we think of...
I want you to explain it. A lot of with the Connections kids, as you know, with the struggle of the unemployment rate and so forth, getting ed techs. So normally, we might have said, okay, we're going to hire an ed tech too, but it's hard to find folks. So Ryan was, you know, very proactive to say, well, we have to have support for our students. So that's when we started looking at Connections for Kids to see if they could fulfill some of those positions that we normally would have done with ed techs. So I just wanted to add that.
No, that, that's true.
I have a question about this. As you're talking about the consult consultants and, you know, BHP supports and stuff, these are all advisory, correct? They're not direct contact with kids and teachers in terms of that? Like support within the classroom, within the setting?
No, the BHPs are working directly with the student. They're one-on-one.
The BHPs directly with the students.
Yes, and Jillian worked directly with the students as well. So she'll go in and she'll observe, and then she'll model, and then she'll provide, you know, support to the teacher and say, this is what it looks like.
And this is for grades one to what?
And Jennifer will do that as well.
Which grade levels are this for?
So Connections for Kids can be for any grade level. I can bring that in for any kid, but for, for Jillian and for Jennifer, right now they primarily work with the elementary schools. Jennifer has consulted with the middle school.
And does this extend to the middle and the high schools?
It could, yeah. I mean, I've had Jillian consult on specific kids at the high school level before and at the middle school as well.
Okay, because my concern is the kids in the middle school and high school trying to transition from one program to another and trying to get their special needs met, but as well as that trying to mainstream, you know, within the mainstream. And what kind of support do we offer those kids so that they can be successful and be able to go back and forth within programs when they're ready?
Right. So my experience has been in the last year and a half I've been here, I've been very happily surprised with the supports that we currently put in place. A lot of, of my time in consultation really has been at the younger grades. I'll think a lot of that is because of students' emotional regulations. But the programings off, that we offer, having SOS is available to us at the high school level, and also the, the behavior program we have at the middle school, and some additional supports that we're able to put in place. That level of flexibility has really been supportive to us. I think where we do struggle oftentimes have been students that have been placed in group homes here within Auburn.
Right.
That has really been the challenge. That's the, and you'll see later, our numbers of state agency clients have, have gone up.
They're coming from all over the place. They're not coming from here.
No, they're not coming from here. So they might have been removed by the Department of Health and Human Services, DHS. They'll come in and they'll remove students and they'll place them in group homes. And we have group homes here in Auburn, and then we have a responsibility to educate them here. And so, you know, we might be a Tuesday where we come in and we have students on our doorstep that we have to program for, and that can be a challenge. And we've worked with Jillian on that as well.
I would have a request on that too. And I know, I mean, as, as a principal and as a special educator, I know that these group homes have been put, put, you know, put together in our, you know, our area. And people seek that, and people, parents are really astute to that, and they, you know, they want to come here and place their, their children here because we do a great job with them. So I would like to have some statistics in terms of...
No, that's not, Alfreda, that's not my experience, is that what I'm talking about is if parents don't seek that out. There have been, there's been an open investigation by, 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 by the state. And the state has deemed that it's not safe for the child to remain in their home. And so then they'll look around, what are the available beds? And so then they will then turn around and say, okay, based on availability, if there's a bed here in Auburn, they'll place them here in Auburn. So it's, it's not a parent's choice. Oftentimes, you know, the, I mean, at that stage in the game, parents are still involved, you know, and unless the, unless the state has terminated their parental rights, usually then at that point, they'll place them with a foster family, with an adoptive family. But our experience is that, you know, when, when... But our experience is that, you know, when, when students come into those situations, they're coming from a traumatic situation.
Sure.
And they're, you know, again, they'll land on a Tuesday. They'll land on a Wednesday. They'll come in on a Friday afternoon. You know, we provide, turn around, provide them something on a Monday.
I know. I've had that experience.
And that's really been the struggle. This, my experience has been with the students that live here, have families here, you know, at the middle school and high school, we do a pretty good job. With the supports that we currently have in place, we, we do a very good job. The Connections for Kids support that we, that Katie had talked about, one of the struggles with is that, you know, we compete with other school districts and with the private schools on, on ed techs. So bringing in the BHP support, that is allow us not just to bring in somebody with an ed tech three certification, the cost to the district ends up being what the cost of, of an ed tech two would be. In addition to that, they get one hour of social work service in the school, and they get, they're supervised by a clinician. And the Connections for Kids also has a, a BHP supervisor. So we recently put a, a BHP into place for a student at one of our elementary schools, and on a regular basis, we have three staff from Connections for Kids in the school, working directly with the student, which is far more than what we would be able to provide on our own. And in turn, we're gonna be able to keep that student here in our, here in our public school. Yes?
Ryan, take your mic. Sorry. Ryan, tell me what behavior means.
That's a loaded que- how much time do you have?
Just general. Does that mean that I'm gonna fight with the person next to me and cause disruption in the class? Does it mean what?
So behavior can be anything that's disability-related.
Disability.
That, I mean, when I look at it, when I think of anything that's disability-related, that impedes the child's learning, or that of another child. So there are some replacement behaviors. Like if I'm sitting in class and I'm doing this, this is a behavior, and I might have ADHD. Now you say, hey Ryan, now just do this. That's a replacement behavior. It serves the purpose. This is a behavior. This is a replacement behavior, and it's, now, that's a simple, that's a simple example. But some of our behaviors are much more complicated than that, so it requires more support. So in, within that, so when we think about, so those are the in-support, in, in district supports that we offer for students that are non-programmed. These are supports that I just mentioned, keep kids in the classroom with their non-disabled peers. So at the times when we do have to go out of district, we do serve fifty-three students in our out-of-district placements. So when I came to this, to this board last year, at that time, we had forty-seven out-of-district placements. By the end of the year, we are at sixty-one that we paid for. Our state agency clients had gone from ten to seventeen, which is what I just mentioned, and now we remain at seventeen. So right now, we currently serve seventy. At the end of last year, we, we were serving seventy-seven kids out of district. And now we serve seventy. And, yes.
Go ahead.
No, so, and, so, and right now, we serve fifty-three that we pay for.
Currently, it's fifty-three that we pay for.
How many are residential out-of placement, out-of district?
Seventeen, state agency clients.
Those are state agency clients?
And I'll refer to them as SAC.
Okay.
So, let's talk, now talk about what we currently have in-house. Because, you know, we think about, and I often hear about, you know, the large number of out-of-district kids that we have. But if, when you really look down at it, we actually serve more students in, in, in programs in district than we serve out. So we have ninety students that we currently serve that could really be placed in out-of-district placements in our schools. So we have eleven students from the Auburn, that live in Auburn, that attend RETC or SOS. We have twenty-four students that are served in our elementary behavior classroom, the in-district classroom I talked about at Sherwood. We have twenty-seven students in our developmental disabilities classroom at Fairview. These are students with intellectual disabilities, Down Syndrome, some levels of kind of autism with intellectual disabilities as well. And we have twenty-seven elementary kids, kids with orthopedic impairments, that have intellectual disabilities. They're, they're served in that program. We have eight students in the language-based program at Park Avenue, which is a district program. We have eight students in our Team Achieve, or Team Abraham, at our middle school. We have eight students in our Team Achieve program, which is our functional life skills program. And I was lucky enough to be able to have lunch with them yesterday. They invited me for Christmas dinner yesterday afternoon, so that was, that was awesome. And we have twelve students in our functional life skills program currently at the high school. So all told, we have ninety students that we serve. And again, and, and I have, I have met every single one of the, every single child in this, in these programs. And you could serve these children in out-of-district placements, and in many places. So when you think about your out-of-district number, you could include this ninety. So we are serving that population, and we're keeping that continuum in our schools. And so when we think about building additional, it's not, it's not building programs to serve out-of-district children, it's to add to what we currently have.
So can we take more students in the SOS program?
There's just one kind of program though.
They have, they have an advisory board for that, for that. And, you know, I know Chris is here, and I, you know...
Chris and I've talked about it tonight.
So, in terms of our placements, the, the fifty-three that we serve, those costs can range anything from thirty-six thousand dollars up to a hundred thousand. And, and we have students, at times could exceed a hundred thousand dollars based on their, their services. So, you know, if we're able to, we'll tap into their main care, but if some of our students don't have main care, they lose it, then we have to pay all those costs. So, and, you know, the tuition rate's determined by the state, and they determine that right around October, November, and they can backbill back to July one.
And that throws our budget skewy.
It does.
On it, because we don't know what the rates are when we start our new budget on July first.
Yes, correct.
I also don't know what our student population will be.
Correct. That's mine.
We'll never know that.
Tom, did you, did you look at this beforehand? Did you, did Katie share this with you? Because I feel like you're reading my mind. So, so, so when we think about building additional programming, so where is the need? So, when I looked at this, when we think about our students, our population, what our need is in our continuum, we could do a better job providing program for students with high degrees of autism. So autism that's really impactful for them, and impacts every aspect of their life. We have the EDD program, but that serves students on the spectrum, but also students with intellectual disabilities. What I'm talking about are students that are, you know, with autism that really need that high level of ABA, applied behavioral analysis. So, last year, we had, we had to place eight students. When I came on board, we had placed eight students over the summertime after the budget session, after budget passed, totaling two-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand dollars. Because we didn't have effective programming within the district. This year, that was eight students. This year, we've had to place four students totaling two-hundred-and-sixty thousand. And again, so those, you know, you, you look at the numbers and say, well, okay, you know, but you gotta remember, sometimes students have main care, sometimes they don't. I can't go any more information on that because I don't wanna, you know, potentially reveal any students, but... So all of those costs are unanticipated. So you can't really budget for it. Like I know that I have twenty-seven students coming in next year that are currently identified in CDS. I was told by the CDS director that in the, in the area, right, Lewiston, Auburn, Turner, there are twenty-one students with autism, seven of which live in, live in Auburn. So, this, as the severity of the need, I won't know that until April, maybe May, and budget's already done by that point. And so now it's just about how do we identify, and how do we program appropriately for those students? So if we were to add additional in-district programming, this is the area that I would want to identify and, and work to, to build. So I call it the opportunity, right? So to create an autism program, you know, you have the potential to serve four-year-olds, and to have them serve students that are in CDS. And I've talked to Lou Collins about this with, at CDS, you know, they would be able to pay for that. Not all of the costs associated to the services of those students could be covered, but we would try our very best to do that, so that's something to think about. But a lot of that stuff could be reimbursed by the state. We'd have to figure out the rates on that. And what we would be able to do is, you know, for lack of a better word, we'd be able to compete with some of the ABA programming that's in the area. Because this is an IEP team decision. So when you have a student that comes, you know, that you, that you've observed, that's non-verbal, you know, that's working on gesturing, working on toileting, it's, it's a hard case to say that on that continuum, they can be in their regular classroom.
Yeah, they can.
Even with support.
They can.
They can, they can to a point, but, you know, a lot of research shows that they need ABA programming. And, you know, and there have been, and, you know, I, I stay up to date with special education law and, and due process cases, and, you know, I think it would be, I'm not sure they would be a service to students to say, okay, you'd be in a regular classroom with a one-on-one support. You need some additional services in addition to that. So, some of the thoughts are, is to create a program of our own. Yes?
Well, we had a pre, when we started pre-K, we started it with CDS, right?
Right. Yes, we did.
So there was a lottery, right, that the traditional student would be in the lottery, and it would be one to two, one traditional to two CDS?
No, not necessarily. The students...
Is that how it was in the system?
I started the program, okay? And, and that was whoever fit from that area who needed services in a preschool program came in, whatever we had for a classroom. So one was in one classroom here in Auburn. There were two classrooms in Auburn and one in Lewiston, and then, since then, they've expanded. So those students who qualified, who were special services, came into the programs. And what we had for room left after that were the, the children from the neighborhood with the lottery. And it was paid for with CDS funds.
Yeah, you had to have more typical, they call, more typical students than the CDS students. So there were slots identified for CDS students. We have two teachers, one teacher at Sherwood Heights and one teacher at Fairview that has a two-eight-two.
Yep.
Their two-eight-two certificate, so they are, their slot, they have, they hold slots in their programs for CDS placement. If CDS doesn't place, then they're filled with what you call typical. They used to be able to bill at a higher level. That got shifted and changed a little bit in order to help with services that we may provide in the pre-K program. So, yes.
And the pre-K money is still there. I mean, the CDS money is still there to help support this. I, I like what I'm hearing here. And this, the money is still there. You just have to go after it and say, we're gonna take these kiddos if you wanted to start, you know, a, a program with children with autism. The money is there.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, our numbers for CD, incoming CDs have been cut in half. You know, last year, we were at twenty, twenty-eight students that came in that were identified. The year prior to that was fifty-six, like fifty-two and forty-eight. You know, CDS is, you know, they, they don't have many service providers. You know, these are teachers. These are great special ed teachers. You know, they're underpaid, they're overworked, they have caseloads of a hundred, and they get to other jobs. Because they're competent, they get other jobs. So I know that CDS right now in this area is looking for six teachers, or six case managers. You know, and that's put our numbers low, and I still have, you know, we still have open slots that are held for students at, at Sherwood, and I'm, I've been holding on to them as, as long as I can. But, you know, if we, if we're not able to fill them by mid-January, we'll open them up. But I think it's important to say that the student population, which I'm talking about here, in, with the severity of need, would need more services and programming than what a typical pre-K could provide. You know, and, and I'm all about providing services in the least restrictive environment, but I'm more about providing the appropriate service based on student need. And, and I think that that's really, really, really important. And this is an area which I think that we could service, and this is an area where I think that we, we, you know, we could keep students in district with significant disabilities. I'm talking significant, significant needs and concerns. So, you know, the district, we, we would save money, and we would talk about that in a second. If we provided a program, you know, students will have access to their non-disabled peers, and the, and the programming could expand over time. So again, you know, what do we talk about in terms of what makes this program look differently than what we currently have? So you would, you would need to teach in the ABA format, so Applied Behavioral Analysis. So there have been due process cases that I've talked about. When you look at a parent asking for an out-of-district program versus what a, what a school district was offering, there's case, cases that say, these are the components of what a really good ABA program looks like. So if we're gonna build it, because we're gonna compete with Margaret Murphy, that's what we're gonna have to do. Parents can sit across the table from me and say, I want Margaret Murphy. So if we're gonna be competitive, and if we wanna keep those students in district, this is what needs to happen. It needs to be ABA format. You have to have one-on-one students-teacher ratio.
You do.
You have to, for this population. They need to be, have that direct student modeling. You gotta provide ongoing professional development on Wednesday. Right? You gotta talk about the principles of, of ABA. You gotta have BCBA support. And depending on whether you wanted to bill or not, if you wanted to bill, you, you would need clinician or psychological consultation. If you don't bill, and my, my budget numbers are based on not billing, then you would not need psychological consultation.
So you can actually say that we might save money by doing...
We're gonna...
Next slide.
Yeah. So, our estimated costs, right? So, thinking about, and you wanna teach it with good experience. So, you, you, you know, taking somebody right out of college, you know, they're, they're out there, right? But they're far, they're few and far between. So, you know, you need experience, so based on having a family and a couple years' teaching experience, around, you know, sixty-five thousand dollars. And then the, you know, and so, I'm, I'm here, I'm talking about, right now, what I'm showing you is if we were to build a program and service four students. Because if you, if you just put a, a lot of kids in a, in a classroom, you know, you, you wanna, you need to build it over time. And I would really wanna focus on our kindergarteners. You wanna be this successful, and you wanna start with your, your kindergarten population, incoming kindergarten. So you figure four ed techs, there's the cost there, thirty thousand or so, and BCBA support. I've talked to Jillian, and based on a lot of her tier-one work, she thinks that she could free up some time, five to seven hours per week, so that's an, that's a zero additional cost to us. And then materials, you know, and that could be more, materials, but I would fund that out of the IDEA grant. So that would be, so the total estimate cost would be about a hundred and ninety-one thousand.
And that includes benefits?
Yes. Yeah, so, so now, let's talk about the cost comparison, right? So, when you look at an average cost placement for a student at Margaret Murphy runs, it's a, this is a slightly high, but when I looked at the average, around fifty-five thousand dollars. About that's what that's gonna cost the district.
There's highs and lows, right.
But there's, but you can go...
This is the average.
Right, so you can go anywhere between, you know, fifty-one thousand, and if a student doesn't have main care, it could be as high as a hundred. But on average, around fifty-five. So, at four students, that's two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars, right? So, the figure I gave you was a hundred and ninety-one thousand. So that's a, a cost per student of twenty-eight thousand, nine-hundred-and-nineteen dollars.
I like the sounds of that.
So, the, the difference in here is, and the challenge is gonna be, you know, you'd have to, you have a question?
I do have one. You can finish your point if you want.
No, I'll, I'll take your question first.
How much, two things. Do we have space to do this, and how much space does it, is that gonna be one classroom, or, not classroom, but one space, or is it four spaces?
Well, I think to begin with, because my numbers are based on four kids, would be one space.
One space.
You know, I, I, a typical classroom.
So a full classroom?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure I would wanna put it at Park Avenue. I mean, those classrooms are small. And there's, there's a lot going on there. But I've, you know, I've talked to, I've talked to Mike Davis. You know, I don't have a particular classroom in mind, but I've had conversations with, with, with principals, and we can look at that. You know, if, if the, and the program will be successful, you would need to expand it, and you would need to add more classrooms over time. You know, my, my idea is to have, my proposal here is to have, you know, ages four to grade three. And that gives you time to add more students, make it successful, start with kindergarten, bring those kindergartners in the first grade, start to build the reputation of the program, and build it. And so then you can say, okay, guys, you know, we're having some progress here. So then it would give the board a couple years to say, okay, now those kids are gonna go in the fourth grade. Where are they gonna go in the fourth grade? Because if they just end up going back out of district, then what's the point? So you wanna build that, and you, or you want, you wanna build that capacity. So, you know, that's the...
I think you could get some CDS monies too, for the four and five-year-olds, in terms of materials, equipment, that kind of thing.
You can for the four-year-olds, because when they turn five, and, and, you know, there's a proposal right now in the legislators to get rid of the six-seventy-sixth. So just to go. So when they, typically, when they turn five and they come into us, they're already in kindergarten. But, you know, we could, we could, we could do, we could take four-year-olds. I think that the challenge is, you know, you're gonna, the four-year-olds is tough, and, you know, we're gonna have to put up the money in the budget. See, you know, we, we pay for these students, we always do, but there, there, there's always unanticipated costs. What I'm talking about is, is upfronting the two-hundred, you know, almost two-hundred thousand dollars. And to do that over consistent, a number of years, takes a, a big commitment on the, on the part of the school district.
Does anybody else do it in the, in the state? Anybody else do this program and fund it upfront and...
Yeah, I mean, I mean Lewiston has their RISE program. So they have, has, has RISE.
RISE, okay.
They have their RISE program. They have, they serve fifty-three students in RISE. Forty, forty-one of them just have autism. And, and then in addition to that, they have, you know, over forty students still placed at Margaret Murphy. We have thirty-four at Margaret Murphy currently.
Does Auburn have anyone that, that specifically... Does Auburn have anyone that, that specifically looks at every child to make sure they're getting all of the federal dollars that they can? Many moons ago, when I worked for the Department of Human Services, I was a business manager. My job was to look at each child and to make sure that they maximize all of the federal dollars they were getting. And over the course of the year, not bragging, I paid for my salary many times over by getting more people qualified what they were eligible for.
Sure, yeah, so our, our related service providers are, are amazing. So that, we, we make sure then at the IEP meetings that we're having the conversation with parents about main care and about, you know, if they'd be willing for us to bill. And so we're doing that and we're billing for the services appropriately for our students. Chris does a good job working with his social workers to make sure we're maximizing on our, our billables through, um, through, through main care. So we pay, and but we do end up paying the seed on that. So we do have a budget line, you know, so we, we are paying public seed on the connections for kids. You know, there is a cost to that. But, you know, so, but yes, we are. You know, and, but also in terms of looking at just generally programming, this year I've committed to reading every single IEP. I'm reading all seven hundred and giving feedback on every single one of them. So right now I have thirty IEPs on my desk to review and give them feedback within the twenty-one days. But I've committed to do that, that's important. I want to make sure that the program that we're providing is, is appropriate and that our goals are measurable, that we're asking good questions, that we're, that we're, we're building based on student need. Somebody better hit me, I'll just keep going, because I'm really passionate about that. It's, it's about providing the most appropriate and then having really good conversations. And I'm really challenging my staff to do that. So I've made a commitment to do that, I'm having fun with it. Makes for a lot of late nights, but it's, it's good reading, so.
You could think about it on the way home.
I do, yeah. So, um, so we do have some additional needs. So we're, we're in an audit year this year. When you mean the Department of Education comes in and audits our programs, they'll be here on January sixteenth and seventeenth. They were at Franklin Merrill Hill on October thirty-first. And so, you know, they have asked us or have ordered us to provide additional special education supports and services. And I need to submit a plan to them by January thirtieth. As to how we're going to provide special ed supports in programming there. So I've talked to Russ about that, we're, we're talking about it, I've talked to Katie. You know, we're, we're going through the process on, on how to do that. And also right now, we have a need for additional psychological evaluation support. I was able to have somebody sign a contract yesterday. So, you know, I'm trying to work in the budget numbers that we currently have. Hopefully we'll keep them. And then, you know, we might need to be, we might need to build the numbers of that, of the, for that evaluation going for next year. So those are some additional needs.
So do we currently have special ed support at Franklin and Merrill Hill?
We have our team leaders at the high school and our middle school provide consultation support. But we're looking to see if providing special education support at the school, having students, if they need reading and writing or math, go back to the school, if that's going to be appropriate or not, or whether we need to bring a teacher or an ed tech three down to the building. That's what we're, that's what we're investigating.
Support staff, you know, direct care personnel. I mean, I would think that we would need, I would support, you know, a person or a couple of people to go and assist with this because this takes manpower.
Yeah, I mean, I think at least, at least one. We only have eleven students right now. I think actually it's either nine or eleven at, at Franklin that currently receive special education supports. But it is an area of need. It is something that we need to, uh-
Nine.
Nine students. Russ?
Russ.
Nine, okay, nine. So it, it is something, but I don't think that we would need more than, than one person.
Like at least one.
What we're, what we're, what we talked about Franklin staff is dual certification. Are there teachers that have their dual certification or would be interested in their dual certification? A lot of it is leaning towards having dual-certified teachers so that they can work with special ed as well as the general ed. So that it's a more inclusive, especially at Franklin where they're very, you know, integrated in their programming. So we did talk about that and we've also talked about what do they have as resources? What are we going to be looking at for next year? So, but part of Russ's budget meeting with us is to discuss all that.
Sounds good.
So nine kids at Franklin and Merrill Hill out of forty or forty-five?
They have a total right now of, seven plus, yeah, seventy, seventy-three?
Seventy-three.
So you have your middle school, you have your, the Lewiston, and we have the-
So that is a need that we have. But, you know, I'll, I'll take any other question that you have. But I think it's really important, you know, and, and I've, I've worked in several different districts in, in my time and often times people talk about, well, you know, just build a program, right? Just, just take a building, build a program.
Build it, they will come.
Right, it's, but it's a little more complicated than that. You need to think about your, your disability, right? You need to think about what is it, if you build a program for students with emotional disturbance, what does that look like? That is very different than programming for students with autism.
It is.
Right, it's very different. And if you think about, well, we'll just regionalize it. So we're going to have, we're going to have a building with two-hundred students with autism in it? I mean, when you think about the numbers between Lewiston and Auburn, when you really think about it, that's a lot of students. So you have two-hundred students plus ABA programming of two-hundred ed techs? Where, where are you going to hire all those people? You know, it's, I mean, and then all the consumables and the materials. And that, that's, that's a lot. So we have to think about this, we really need to think strategically about, you know, what do we currently offer? And we have a lot of in-district programming that we currently offer for kids that could be placed out of district. And then we need to be strategic about where's the population that we could better serve. And so I've done that analysis and I think this is where we're at.
One of the things that I thought was very interesting in your presentation was the fact that for years the perception, perception out in the community was that we are a service center, which we are, we're a service center. And therefore, just like Alfreda said, they come here because we're a service center and we have the program. And I was glad to hear that you debunked that myth on it too. It's there because of-
I mean, some, some parents obviously-
Do, right.
Yes, they, they, if they want to attend Margaret Murphy, they might, absolutely. I think it probably, it varies family by family, you know.
But what he said was that the state often places children in foster care.
Right.
And they may be in this area.
In group homes, yeah, in group homes.
In group homes, right, in this area because we have group homes.
Yeah, I mean, they'll look at-
And I don't deny that part of it either.
You know, I, I think, you know, there's a, I, I, I don't work for the Department of Health and Human Services. I don't know all, all the ins and outs of it. But, you know, I think they probably look at where is a student being removed from? What region of the state do they, are they in? And, you know, how can we keep them in close proximity to their families? But, but have some distance as well. And then where are those group homes? I, I can tell you, we didn't have any group homes in Welsa-Gunkwit, when I worked in Welsa-Gunkwit. We have, we have a couple of them here.
You did not have them in Welsa-
We did not have, we did not have group homes in Welsa-Gunkwit. You know, I think the other thing that happens here in Auburn is, you know, if, if you, if you're looking to, to live in this area, you want to live near Portland, it's much more affordable to live here than it is to, you know, to, to live in Portland. So I think that that affordability of, of, for families buying homes is, is a factor too. But I, I just wanted to make it clear too that we have, we have a tremendous, we have tremendous kids. We have tremendous staff. We have a tremendous leadership team within department, within special ed. The team leaders do a great job. And we have wonderful programs that serve ninety students in our programs. We have out-of-district type placement programs currently.
Right.
We have lots of them and serve lots of different populations of need. So my proposal is to really focus on that one area that, that for many years have, has taken additional dollars that have, outside of the budget, you know, that, that, that we need to pay for.
When we speak about children with autism, there are, there's a wide range of autism.
Absolutely.
And they don't all fall into one little pocket and go into one little place. They go all programs, you know, you can fit them in in all the programs. So they're not all congested in one and that puts the pressure on one program to have, you know, it'd be too many of them, of them there. But I'm looking at, you know, diversifying the program so that these kids can be going in, in various locations and their needs being met. And to go back to, to what Bonnie had said in terms of the, the programs with group homes, I'm talking about families. I mean, the children with autism whose parents want the best for their kids are well-connected. And they know this is a magnet. They know it's not because they're getting services per se, but they know that we're going to do a good job with the students in terms of special ed.
Absolutely.
So we do, we are a magnet for them. I don't blame them for doing that. I would want, I would want that, you know? So I, I'm so encouraged to hear this, I've been waiting to hear this. You know, I've been barking at you for a long time. Thank you very much for, this is really, really awesome because it starts here. And it's nice to see what's going on right now, I was hoping to hear that. And then go, moving from here. Because I, I, and I agree with you and you agreed with me in terms of we are going to save money by doing this. Because, you know, with every, you know, student who comes with the needs that require some specialized instruction, every one student costs a lot of money. So if we can have a program and put four kids in it versus just one, or send one kid out, one kid out, one kid out, that's going to cost us a lot of money. So, um, it's not about money, it's about providing the best service within our community. Because we are the village, we are raising the children, we're going to help them, you know? They're going to grow up here, you know?
Go ahead.
What is, what is the percentage of the seventy students that are out of district now that have autism?
Thank you for reminding me because I wanted to get back to that. So I'm going to get back to that slide here.
What percentage of those students would have benefited from this if we had it in place already? I guess I'm asking if this number's going to change, I guess.
Good question.
All right, so, I'll start by saying this. So the number of students that we have in programs, specific programs, whether in district or out of district, so that, that's, that's twenty-three point seven percent of our special ed population. So when we think about out-of-district students, that includes state agency clients, and students in, you know, RETC or BI or ED, all those students together, that's twenty-three point seven percent of our identified population. When you just look at our number of students that are in our in-district programs, RETC, EDD, right? That's thirteen point two percent. So thirteen point two percent of the students that are currently in our public schools in Auburn are served in these programs. When you look at the number of students that are, um, that are in out-of-district placements, that includes our state agency client kids, now we're serving ten point three percent of our population. So it's getting smaller, right? That's good. When you look at the number of students, just the out-of-districts that we pay for, now we're at seven point eight. So you can see that there is, so we, you know, we have the total of twenty-three percent that we serve in programming and you get down to, when you whittle it down to what were the students that are high-cost, it's seven point eight percent. Now, I, I, I can't tell you, you know, without looking at the grades and ages, you know, I would like to sit here and tell you, right now we have at Margaret Murphy, we serve thirty-four kids at Margaret Murphy. And some of them are, they're on the spectrum, right? So some of them might have, you know, maybe their cognitive abilities are a little bit higher and they might have some more behaviors. But within that, Margaret Murphy does a nice job of providing a continuum of services that still meets that out-of-district need. But the programming that I want to focus on is the really high-intense, really language developmental need, including, you know, a lot of stemming behavior students that really need really high-need individualized program, the really high-cost student. That without this programming would never be having access to their same age, non-disabled peer. So it's hard to tell you, you know, you know, would that, if we would have done this ten years ago, would that number, would that, would that number still be thirty-four? I would, it would be less. But would it be ten? Would it be two? I don't know, I can't tell you. I have no way of knowing. But, you know, the, the goal here is to, you know, start a program, small numbers.
Yep.
Heavy support, make sure it works. And then build it over time, show that it works and the commitment to it. And then, you know, try to expand it for upper grade levels. So those are the things that, those are the things that works. When you, I toured, I toured another program yesterday in preparation for today, the CAD program in South Portland. They have, they've been around now for five years, they serve twenty kids. Three classrooms, you know, no more, four classrooms, no more than five kids in each classroom. So, they, you know, they really focus on, you know, one-on-one individual need, ABA programming. And that's what, that's what's effect, that's what proved to be effective. Yes.
Well, I just wanted to make a, well, one question about the BI classrooms. What, um, how many kids are we seeing that are graduating out of those classrooms and being, going back into a normal classroom? Do you have any numbers on that, just an idea? You said there's three classrooms with eight. How many kids are mainstream?
Yep, you know, we do have, so I don't have that number right off the top of my head.
Oh, I don't need an exact number.
Right, but I can get back to you about that.
Definitely do.
They, they do, but also within, within the classrooms, the majority of the students spend part of their day, or a good majority of the day, in mainstream, in the mainstream. You know, we, in the last, in the year and a half that I've been here, we've only had to outplace one student that has needed to go from there to someplace else. So I think that's, that's good. And we, but we, but they work really hard early on to get them into the classroom, the regular classroom. And there's a culture at Fairview that understands that and knows that and accepts them and brings them part, as part of, yeah, sorry, at Sherwood Heights, as part of the, I apologize for Sherwood Heights, I apologize to all the teachers out there.
And they, they, you know, they have scheduling that makes sure an ed tech is supporting. So the ed tech goes with the students. So they work together when their students are ready to go, they're, you know, we want it to be successful. So they work very hard on that.
Okay, and I just also wanted to point out, um, your presentation was great.
Well, thank you.
Very informative, and I like the idea of you starting if this, if we do implement this plan with a small number of students. Because I know Alfred has pushed for us to stop outsourcing kids and just for cost-effective purposes. But I think we all ultimately need to, like Alfreda said, the complexity of these children is so extreme that finding appropriate people to give them the best care and best education we possibly can, it's not about the money. And that's just my biggest concern with you pushing outsourcing, but ultimately-
Start small.
Start small because we have to not focus on the dollar amount, we have to focus on what's most important for our kids.
Absolutely.
Because I know, and thank you, because I know you pointed that out. And I just, kudos for, if we're going to do it, start small. Because my concern is if we're going to try to not outsource, that we're going to really miss the opportunity to give these kids their full potential.
I, I will tell you, that's always going to be my focus.
And I know it will be.
I, I will always push back on that, no matter, you know, who it is, whether it's the superintendent or whether it's, and Katie would never do that, but that, for me, it's what is the most important programming for kids? That's why, that's why I'm looking at every single IEP, all seven hundred of them this year, is because you've got to lead by example. That's, that's what's important. It's the individualized programming, what is the, what do the evaluations tell you? What are the needs, right? How are they doing in the classroom? What is, what's your present levels? What's your IEP goal? And what's your services? How are you going to track it? You know, and, and making sense of all of that has really good outcomes for kids. And then using your special ed process to, to help kids, right? So, you know, we spent the summer putting all of our special ed forms in, on a Google Drive, breaking it down by category, putting them in order, having, having a binder for everybody so they can go through the process and they know how they can, how they can use the special ed team process to their advantage to have better outcomes for kids. We're not just potion and paper, we're doing what's good for kids.
Yes, thank you.
Good for doing that.
Bonnie?
I agree with Faith on everything she said and with Alfreda with what she said, that we need to service the kids first. But we also need to look at the dollars. So if the funding, there's, there's always been a special formula or a special two-year lapse or whatever for funding for a special ed that comes back to, from the state, is, is there some kind of a funding program too? Is there's money coming back from the state every other year still?
It's, it's different now.
It's different now, okay.
Yes, it's ca, it's calculated on what you have been doing, absolutely. So it's a whole formula like EPS, I couldn't begin to tell you how.
Okay.
Because it's when they try to tell, you know, they'll explain it and say, there are lots going on in the background.
Right.
But yes, we had an increase in our special ed funding last year due to the change in formulas. So these students are being accounted for anyway where they are in their, in their programming. So it's just reporting it differently. So we would have to obviously check on pulling them in, is that, how's that going to impact? But we, we account for them in our reporting.
Yes, trial find.
Clarification, the, the program that you're proposing for students with one teacher and four ed techs, you're saying would occupy an entire standard classroom?
I would, I, my suggestion would be take a standard classroom because in the next year, you're going to bring four more, you're going to bring four more in.
And I'm going to need another classroom.
No, you could put, you could put, I would say you could put up to maybe eight to twelve kids in one classroom. You could put eight to twelve in, but no, I mean, you don't need a classroom for just four kids moving forward. You know, I, I would, you know, I could, I could sit here and, that's a great question, but I could sit here and propose, you know, bringing in nine kids. But what's the likelihood of, you know, forking up what all that money is going to cost for nine students? I mean, it's not-
And find the staff.
And find the staff to do it. Because we've got to remember, we're, we're competing, you know, with the Lewiston School Department. Our, our rights are pretty comparable for ed techs, but they're lower. They're much lower than Margaret Murphy. You know, we're Gray New Gloucesters just down the road, you got Turner. you got Turner, so you're competing for all of the staff available, so you have to, you got to build it, but you know, people want to work for a program that's a winner, right? People want to go to Alabama and play for Alabama because Alabama's a great football team, right? If you're, if you, you know, there's a reason why Stanford University has won eight national women's volleyball titles, because they're a winning program, no matter how many years the coach has been there, right? So you want, you want to be with a winner.
Have to recruit.
Right, you want to be with a winner.
He's a big volleyballer.
I'm a volleyball guy, so everybody knows that the national championship just happened this past weekend, Nebraska fell.
But he knows.
Right, so.
All right. To follow up on that space need, how many students and how many teachers would be in that, could you maximize that one classroom? What would be the maximum use of that space? One teacher, two teachers, nine students, eight students?
You know, I, I don't know what the regulations are, but my mind tells me, I think in a program, a self-contained program, I think it's one teacher for like 12 students. But I have, I'd have to look at that, I'd have to look at that, but then you would have the ed techs on top of that. So if you, you know, if you, if you got up to 12 kids, you would have 25 people in one classroom.
Right.
Which would be, which would be a lot. You know, my thing would be probably one classroom for, for eight kids. But again, you know, if we do it the way that I suggest, you're going to have, you're going to be able to look down the line. You're going to be able to start thinking strategically about this, you know, and I'm, I'm building relationships with Lou. I got my numbers this year for my, much sooner, I meet with him on a pretty regular basis. You know, I'm going to be putting out an email to staff saying, hey, does anybody want to earn a couple extra dollars, I got some money to go out and go over to CDS and photocopy those files for them, help them in January, because we don't, we don't always get complete files. So we're going to go over there and, and try to get to that information, and, and all for the purpose of knowing our kids sooner, and, and that will help us over the years, understand what, what, what we, what we may need.
And Ryan, I would just remind you what you said about ABA principles. So if you're building, it's, there's state regulation, and then there's, if we're going to do this, we're going to do it well.
Right.
Right?
Absolutely.
The, the number of teachers would, would.
Would be determined that way. So can I put different age students in that classroom?
I, I think, I don't, and I'll have to look at the, the programming.
That you'd have to have a range, I would imagine.
Yeah, I think you can't have more than a five-year gap age with, between students, because it, because the, because the intellectual needs and the developmental needs and functional needs become so great, it's hard for the teacher to program for.
What I'm driving at is, is a, a realization of this committee and the community, that if you initiate a program with this design, then it is going to have a demand on space. And space at an elementary school right now is at a premium.
Correct.
If you start, you know, with one classroom, which is difficult to find right now, and we're saying, we think we can grow this incrementally over period of time, we're going to need two classrooms, say in three years, and you'd need four classrooms in six years, or whatever, if, if our demand is respect, you know, representative of what the population is. And you now have grown it over age groups, and now you've got to drive that, that split.
So I, I've thought about that, and one of the things that, one of the harsh realities might be, you know, if you, if you did it, you know, age four to third grade, then four, five, and six, unfortunately, I think it would be difficult to keep it in the same building. You'd love to keep it in the same building, but you might have to transition students from one building to another.
Right.
And that will give you time to think about that, and then you would have a middle school program, you know, and we, but then at that point, we might look at our middle school program and say, okay, do, do, do the needs of the students, can those needs be met and achieved, now that they're a little bit older, right? They've had this many years of, of ABA programming, and we can think about that down the line, right? So we have six or seven years to think about that. And then at, then at that point, then you're looking at one extra classroom at the middle school, and then maybe potentially one extra classroom at the high school. So you have time to think about it, but you know, I don't, I don't anticipate, you know, occupying seven classrooms in one of our elementary schools, you know, unless we want to do that. I mean, you know, there are, the Rise program over, you know, over in Lewiston, they have multiple classrooms for that, but they still have a good amount of students that, you know, that still attend Margaret Murphy. So what I'm looking at this is, what are in district programs, how, what students' population do they serve, right? What is, what is a, a specific student population that we currently don't serve in our public schools, and how can we do that? And they just also happen to be some high-cost students. So I mean, that was kind of my approach, but I don't think that's, you know, I, I'm not recommending, or I can understand the hesitation about having three or four classrooms, but that's not what I'm recommending.
More information to come at budget time.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Excellent.
Five-minute break, and then we'll convene the regular meeting. I'd like to convene this meeting of the Armored School Committee with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll start with introductions. Carol, we'll start with you.
Kiara Fornier, Student Rep.
Adam Hanson, Business Manager.
Michelle McClellan, Assistant Superintendent.
Alfreda Fornier, Mayor's Rep, Ward Four.
Jan Placeon, Ward Five.
Ed Gaudier, at large.
Katie Ronna, Superintendent.
Tom Kendall, Ward Three.
Bonnie Hayes, Ward Two.
Faith Fontaine, at large.
Bud Muneeley, Ward One.
And we have a vacancy in Ward Four.
Nomination papers.
Nomination papers are available at the City Clerk office. And I believe, Alfreda, you can correct me, but we have a April or May special election, April, isn't it?
It's April.
April, so looking for a volunteer to join us. Communications, does anyone have a communication they'd care to share?
I have communicate, a communication from the mayor, he wishes me to.
Bring your mic down.
I'm sorry, yeah, there we go. I don't know whose this is. The mayor wishes me to convey that he would like to see a zero, a zero percent increase in the mill rate, in the budget this year.
The consent agenda is the approval of this agenda and the approval of the minutes from our meeting of December 5th, to have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you very much. Public participation, we invite the public who would care to comment on anything that is not on our agenda this evening, to come up to the table, name an address, so we can get back to you if needed, and share with us any of your comments.
Good evening, my name is Laura Garcia, 20 Skilling's Corner Road. I'd like to thank Mr. Fairchild for his presentation tonight, it was very informative and helpful to understanding some of the issues that are facing our district. Ironically, I had checked my messages, and I happened to get a message from a teacher. And reflecting on their message and the information that was presented, I just wanted to ask a couple of questions. Mr. Fairchild indicated that there is a shortage of ed techs. I also know, and from prior meetings, that we also are facing a shortage of substitutes. And parents have mentioned, and teachers have mentioned to me, that oftentimes, the ed techs that we do have are pulled to cover for teachers as substitutes, and that that is obviously creating problems for the students that they're supposed to serve. So I wonder what our plan is to try to address those issues. And if I'm understanding correctly, there are 24 slots at Sherwood Heights for our elementary school-level children that basically need to be removed from the regular classroom. And so what I'm hearing from some teachers is that in the regular classroom that has got a shortage of ed techs, there are students who, in their opinion, should be removed from the regular classroom and be receiving services, so that they can continue their education in a productive and safe environment. I think the comment was that the room clears are becoming almost a daily occurrence in our schools. I'm not sure if the members of the school committee are familiar with what a room clear is, but if that's truly the case, I'm wondering about whether or not there are placements that should be happening that are not going on. And I'm also kind of thinking, 24 students slots, given the size of our population for K through six, seems maybe like not sufficient. And then the other thing, it came up on a prior occasion, and it hasn't been lost on the teachers, because they've made mention of it to me as well. Tonight, Superintendent Grandin, you referenced the hope that perhaps you can meet these states, I don't know what the word is, they're asking the special education students' needs to be addressed at Franklin, did I understand that correctly? You mentioned dual certification, and this is something that the elementary school teachers have mentioned to me as well, is this idea that they would get dual certification so that they would be better able to serve the students in their classroom, particularly the ones that again, they feel should be removed from the classroom and receive the services they need. They're feeling very overwhelmed and frustrated that trying to do everything that they are being asked to do in terms of mass customized learning, data collection, individualized learning plans, and now they feel that they are also being asked to service students that perhaps should be receiving services elsewhere. So I just wanted to leave you with that feedback that I have received from the teachers, and along that same line, I sent, usually you ask if any communications have been made to the school committee members, but tonight I know we're late getting started on our regular meeting. But I did send an email to each of you, and the workshops I think have been very helpful and important, but I do know that the elementary school teachers very much feel like their experience in the classroom and hearing their concerns and what is happening has been a little short-changed in this process. So I did send a request, if you guys would please consider, that request with regard to having a workshop where we can actually hear from some elementary school teachers about what their experience is in the classroom. I, I think that would be very helpful, so. Did you not get it, Pat?
I don't know about the middle school, but I didn't get it.
No, I can send it to you. Did, did others get it?
Was it this afternoon?
Yep.
I left early, so.
Okay, I'll send it along to you, Pat.
I probably got it, I just didn't check.
Okay, thank you very much. Everybody have a nice holiday.
You too, thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Bob?
Tom, I'd like to, again, in our Sun Journal this week, they announced their all-region teams, and again, Gillian Richardson was mentioned, and congratulation to her, and there was also a soccer player, Christian Bellevue, congratulations to them. And I have a response to the mayor's ask for a zero percent increase in the budget. I would like to know what his, the increase in evaluation in his first year of his term, see if he's done a good job.
I'll bring that back to the mayor.
Very good, I believe he was, the request, if I understood you correctly, Alfreda, was a zero increase in the mill rate, which does not necessarily translate to a zero increase in the budget, and certainly all city budgets are under contractual pressure to address the needs, so if, if it was a zero increase budget, we would be cutting services and staff, so. Anyone else from the public that, something to share? Very well, student information? Bring us up to date, what's happening.
Okay, I have a little bit. So yesterday at Yale, there was a pop-up art show, so students like staying and did stuff in the library, and then there was their artwork displayed in the hallway at the main office in school and in the library, so that was nice to see. And then also yesterday, the, both the boys and girls basketball team won against Mount Airhead, so that's good. Today, we, for the leadership group, well, actually, over the month, we've been collecting food and clothes, toys, and stuff. we've been collecting food and clothes, toys, and stuff to give to Hope Haven, New Beginnings, Trinity Jubilee, Salvation Army, Safe Voices, and the Good Shepherd Food Bank. And our goal was 2018. And we, today we did our final tally and we exceeded our goal. It was over 2,400 items, which was double of last year.
Nice, well done.
And we delivered all those, or all of that out to all those places. I went to the Good Shepherd Food Bank and they were surprised about all the food that we had collected, so that was nice. And then we had, the boys and girls hockey teams played tonight, and I think that's why Olivia's not here, so she's over there. And also AMS, they have Spirit Week this week. And they, I know tomorrow's like Throwback Thursday. My sister, when I left the house, she was trying to get all of her outfits together and stuff, so stressing out about that. And, oh, and then also at Yale, the freshman class is doing a fundraiser with the administration. And I think Mr. Latusha is in the lead. I guess they have jars in the main office and you can put money in it, and whoever has the most money at the end of the week, it's ice dumped on them. Like the ice bucket challenge. But, and yeah, that's all I have. And I know, I think Ms. Grandin has stuff about the elementary schools, so on your thing, right? On the bright spot?
At the bright spot.
Yeah. So, yes.
Nice job. Very nice job. I'd like just to give a shout out to Sherwood Heights. They had the weather people from Channel 13 there this last week. And students and parents were standing out in the cold at 4:30, 5 o'clock in the morning. And it was a good group, and they did a great job. And I was glad to see that Auburn School was represented on the weather. That's dedication. Yes, it is. 4:30 in the morning.
All right, moving along, the superintendent's report for business, new high school programming and positions. Katie?
Right. Okay, so I'm using the PowerPoint from the last meeting and updating where necessary. So the two items we're going to cover in the PowerPoint is the new high school as well as the Park Avenue. So just a reminder, yes, pass this out. It's the slides that I'm showing. So just as a reminder that in order for new programs, positions, and transfers to be included in the construction project for the Department of Ed, the Auburn School Committee, I already went that way. Auburn School Committee must approve each one individually. The costs associated with the new positions and programs do not have to be in the fiscal year 2020 budget. However, the funding does need to be in the fiscal year budget immediately prior to the opening of the new ELHS. So this is a reminder that we're in a process. And I did do a presentation on Monday night to City Council and School Committee around where we are with the building project. So if you are interested in that, you can view that on the YouTube channel or Great Falls channel as we went really in-depth on where we are in the process. So right now, we're working on space allocation, really determining what the space needs are. As a reminder to folks, the space for the state-funded is 185 square feet per student. And then there are special allocations for other areas like the cafeteria, the media center, the gymnasium. So we had a Department of Education meeting last Friday, and we're still negotiating those spaces. We're going to be working with Harriman on Friday with the high school to continue to fine-tune that, to bring down the footage. Right now, we're about 10,000 square feet over. With the shift in the Franklin School, we're about 4,000 square feet over. So we're going to do a little bit more work on that. So as we work through those space allocations, we need to get closer to that, the number we need to reach.
Yes, Pat?
Having worked in the school system for 25 years, I can't imagine that between now and then, we're only going to have, need two more teachers. So how does this jive?
There's more than that. So the space, right now, in the space allocation, every teacher has their own classroom. So in order to have, well, first of all, as I just said, we're 4,000 square feet over. If we want more space, we will pay for that locally. And then, yes, you can add additional teachers, but the space would be locally. So what they base it on is the dollar amount, the 180, not dollar amount, square footage, the 185 square feet times the enrollment.
I guess my question is, we've got four years out here.
Correct.
So what happens next year if we need a position, or the year after that, or the year after that? We're, we're only putting two in?
Well, they, oh, sorry.
Maybe I can handle that. At that point, we'd be putting in positions as we need them. But in order to do the design, for Harriman to do the design, the state to approve that design, you have to establish right now what you feel your needs are going to be and approve those positions and programs. That permits Harriman's, our architects, to design the facility to house those programs and then present that to the state for acceptance. In three years, you're very accurate. We're probably going to need additional positions. But you cannot, unless we funded those this year and put those positions in, the state's not going to recognize them. We're saying we're going to have these programs, and these two positions anyway, so that it justifies the classroom space. So that when we put it in the design, it's there because we, as a board, have approved these positions.
I also remember that if every teacher has a classroom, that teacher isn't in that classroom 100% of the time. So you would be doing programming and sharing space. So if you added an additional science teacher, for example, you would be working with the science department on when those classes would occur. So they already know 100% of the time our classrooms are not being used. So part of discussing the space is that very discussion, is some high schools don't build a classroom for every teacher. They expect you to be sharing classrooms because the whole time, they're not being used. For example, we have a broadcast media classroom. So they've already been asking, well, how many classes are you doing that broadcast media? Well, right now, we have one class, but the hope is to have perhaps two or three. Well, then what are you doing with it the other half of the time? Could you run a different program in there? For example, you might do a drama production in there. So you do have to look at the space that it's just not, once it's defined English, that only English will occur in that. You could have a different course going on in that space. So, but the state, Mount Air Rat did fund seven additional classrooms. So you would have to, I mean, we have a lot of local dollars right now on the table with the Performing Arts Center, the athletics, and adult ed, those type of other programs that are identified. So yes, you could add the square footage, but you're going to pay for it locally. So they have a definition of what we can have, and then we have to work on how we would best utilize that.
Alfreda?
To piggyback on Pat's question, tonight we're being asked to approve 12 new programs, which also include 12 teaching positions with them. And when I'm looking at the first page of the school committee agenda item, it says at the bottom of the first page, "The costs associated with the new positions and programs do not have to be in the fiscal year 2020 budget. However, the funding does need to be in the fiscal year budget immediately prior to the opening of the new ELHS." So that means all of these 12 positions and 12 programs are going to be added to the budget.
So good clarification. Remember that the CTE program is a regional program. So LRTC oversees that CTE program coming in.
The 12 positions.
The 12 positions, correct. So working through the CTE funding for those positions, we would have that funding for the positions. These are the two positions that would impact our general fund, these two right here.
The 12 positions would come from where again, just so that we all understand?
With the Lewiston Regional, it's through the career technical ed funding.
From the state?
From the state.
Right, from the state.
Yes. So it works through their funding formula. So we would be working with the advisories on LRTC around the satellite programming. So I know Jim Horns here. He's having a meeting tomorrow with Rob Callahan to talk about starting those advisory for those 12 programs because we're going to need to talk about equipment for those, like fire science. Starting to work with our local fire department, what is equipment? They'll be able to perhaps donate to the program. What is the state paying for? So the state is paying for the square footage for those programs. And then they approve the programs, so the state's aware they're coming. They know they have to be staffed. So, but you have to recognize the program and the position tonight.
Right. And the other question I have is the square footage, you just mentioned that we are over the square footage, that we're allotted already?
That does not include the satellite CTE. That is a whole separate category. They know how much each program needs for square footage, and they're funding that.
Right.
So that does not, that's not part of the 185 square feet.
And these two positions are intended for this new budget?
There's, we don't have to, but they are needed now. So you will have to decide what positions are we going to fund this year, perhaps next year. So this, these will not be the only two positions discussed in the budget.
And alas, I'm promising, this is the last question.
No, you can ask as many questions as you want.
Along with the two, in light of what Mr. Fairchild just presented, I really feel that we need to keep special services in mind if we're going to bring on programs that we add positions as we need them because if we're going to do it, we need to add positions.
So you're right. When we get into the budget, every year I tell you what are needed and what are you going to fund.
Yep. Thank you.
But right now, basically, this is just space allocation, correct?
Correct. This is just space.
And then once we get past this, and each year, the position, the budget will be a separate matter. So just because we allocate space now does not mean we're going to allocate the teaching position.
Correct. We need to approve it so that it can be included in the design.
For the state to approve our funding for our school.
And then move forward with the state.
So if you want to take the vote on those two positions, those are the two vote, the first two votes.
I move that we accept the computer science teaching position and the substance abuse counselor.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Yes, Dan?
What does that do to our budget?
Well, no, at budget time, these positions will come forward. And you'll have to decide whether you're going to do them this year, next year, the year before, so.
When you institute them.
Correct. Right. You're not committing to them being in the budget for FY '20.
Right. Further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Q? One opposed?
The next is just what Alfreda said. You have to approve the 12 programs coming in and the positions. So if you're going to have a culinary arts program, you need to have an instructor. Early childhood education program, you'll need an instructor. So all of this is being worked through the Lewiston Regional Technical Center. And Jim is meeting with Rob Callahan tomorrow to go over the needs, probably around equipment with these programs. And then the funding from the state, remember, the state approved these programs. They know that we are building for these programs. Therefore, they're going to help support, fund, to fund these programs.
I'm going to try and simplify our agenda a little bit. Of the 12 programs that are listed there, does anyone have a concern about any one of those programs that they would like to take individually? Or I would like to have a motion that we approve all programs instead of individually?
So moved.
I hear a
Second.
A question that, no, I'll pull one of these programs because you'd like to discuss that particular one. Please bring that concept forward. Otherwise, I think we can take them as a group. Yes, Bonnie?
These have been approved by the state.
Correct.
Yes.
So we're just approving them here.
Yes. You have to recognize it.
We have to recognize it.
So remember when Rob Callahan did a whole presentation on, yes, now the state needs you to officially, you approved them going to the state for approval. Now you have to approve them, as Bob said, into the space allocation.
So Katie, you said that the state will help fund them?
Yes. Will, will fund the positions.
100%?
Yes.
On the CTE?
As I understand, yes.
I just wanted to make sure when you said help, it wasn't going to be a small portion.
Any further?
Jim's here some.
Bonnie?
I move that we do all 12 of these in support.
Okay, I would accept a motion to approve the 12 programs as listed to be, and the teacher positions associated with them.
Exactly.
Second.
But I have one clarifying question.
Go ahead, Alfreda.
I know I spoke before about agriculture, and I would like some assurance in some way down the road that you could put together, that we could incorporate agriculture somewhere. I know that it was not on the list, nor, I mean, I don't know if they would have approved it or not, but I would like to see us really incorporate that.
It is included on the space allocation, our agricultural through chemist, chemistry through agricultural program.
Okay, so maybe we can have a little update on that down the road. Be good. Thank you.
Further discussion?
I just would like to relieve Alfreda. I know you're worried about the mayor and increasing the budget. Where right now, this is basically just a space allocation. And when these positions come up in the budget, will come up in the budget here that they're recommended for. And that will be a more serious, this is just trying to get our school approved, correct, by the state?
Right.
But these positions here, these 12 positions, will be funded by LRTC or the CTE.
They don't affect the general ledger.
Right.
We won't be responsible for them.
Got it.
All those in favor? Very good. Thank you. Unanimous?
The next one is the program transfer. As you received my email last night, and it went out to the public around the addendum, we have removed the transfer of the Franklin School. I want, as I think those who could make it to the Sanford visit, we had a great discussion on the way back, talking to Russ about the visits, his discussion with the staff. So the decision has been made to have Franklin remain at its current site. As you know, as I shared earlier, and I have shared at the building committee level and subcommittee, Harriman was prepared to either have them onsite or not, so they'll just make their adjustments to the plan, and the DOE also knew that. So that will just make an adjustment. And I shared that at the city council with all of you, that it didn't have a huge impact around those other areas, such as the cafeteria, the auditorium, those things. So they did show, the building committee and I shared on Monday, what the impact would be with them or without them.
What was that, what was the area, the square footage for that particular?
61, around 6,100. So, yes, Pat?
So we can't put that space into the building. Because there are, to me, there are other needs.
Right, right.
There are a significant number of students at Edward Little who need to be in an alternative program, who are disrupting classrooms. And what are the, I guess I need to know if there's an option for creating another program.
Well, things we are going to discuss on Friday is how we can use some of the space. Like you said, can you look at some of those classroom space and reallocate them in a different way? We have to stay within the square footage.
I get that.
Right. So if we go over the square footage, that's something we will bring.
Local funding.
Right. So, yes, we are aware of that. We've talked about, and Russ knows that. We have talked about the needs that the high school has communicated with us. Harriman's aware of those needs. We talked, so, yes, that's part of our discussion on Friday, is how do we offer some of that space for programs, as you spoke about. The SOS program, just to remind people, is our self-contained special ed program. Students, for example, in our self-contained program at the middle school can go to the SOS program, as well as programming at Edward Little High School. So this program coming in, we saw that at Sanford. The director is here. This program is very connected to the high school now. A lot of their students go and take classes over there, and then they go back over to SOS. This gives them opportunity to be in the school in the same way that we had proposed for Franklin. They will have their own space, their own entrance area. It will be designed with their staff on their best needs. That space includes social workspace and office and their classroom space as well. So we'll continue to discuss, what are we going to do at Lake Street with the RETC program? It may be opportunity for us to look at that space and how we might utilize it. So we have time- So, we have time to do that tonight. You need to accept the program coming in. So, it's part of, as Bob reminds us, the design. So, we're asking for your approval on this program.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion, questions?
Would that, just to make sure I've got it clear, would that take up some of that space that you had?
No, it was already included in the footprint.
Thank you.
And the bottom line is, once we jump through all the hoops for the state and the school, Lord have mercy, is finally built successfully, then Auburn can do whatever it wants inside those buildings, right?
That is correct.
We are saying what our intent is today.
Right.
And then we will see where we are in five years.
Yes, Dan?
Just had a question. I don't know if it's the right time, but have we figured out what a, what the local cost, what we can budget for? How do, how do we shop for something we don't even know what we can afford?
We're, we're working on that.
Would you know that before you go shopping?
Well, the building committee is, you don't go shopping for as much as you design it, saying this is what we would like and this is what we've heard from the community and be it, you know, a larger turf field, let's say, or, and the track around that, or an auditorium, or the cafeteria, or additional classroom space, better, better science labs, that type of thing. As it, we then bring that out in a design, then you'll start getting the dollars associated with that. We've had some preliminary dollars put forth and it's, it, what we are looking at right now, if we were to get it all, you know, the range is from, say, 20 million to 30 million of local funding to get everything that was kind of on our list. That is being pared down by the, the building committee to bring it down what we feel is a little more reasonable and what the community would support. But that will be forthcoming at the public forum. We hope to have a concept design, which really, it isn't, it isn't a model that you'll be able to look at, but it should have some 3D imagery of, of the types of things that we would like to incorporate in the, in the new high school to give the public an idea of what we're going for. We want them to have the earliest possible opportunity to weigh in on that and see if we're going in the right direction. We're geared towards a referendum in June that would approve the design and the money that we're, we would expect to raise locally. Two components of that money are both fundraising, soliciting fundraising from the, from the community and alumni, as well as the state funding and then bonding from the city. So, there are several avenues of revenue to support this new, new high school. And it's, you know, what is going to be appetite of the committee, the community, to get the type of school that, as the mayor has suggested, is the best in New England.
Actually, Tom, we did put some mu, we did put some figures towards three different wish lists on it. Right. We had three different wish lists. We did put the money factor to it on, on each list on it. The building committee is going back and, and looking at it and seeing which way we should go with it on it. So, Tom's right. It was anywhere from fifteen to thirty-two thousand, million on it. So, that's not to say that we're going to do it all. But the community has weighed in on it with surveys and forums and they're still going to have more opportunities to weigh in on, on information that's coming out. So, Dan, maybe you need to post in the, in your office, this is what these are.
And I
I just think it would save more time because now you can change your design. If you only have 20 million, then you know you
Correct.
For the school.
Oh, yeah.
More sense.
They put place markers. So, once we're confirmed, those will be flushed out. So, they, they're not doing all that.
They're planning all those options?
Correct. The other thing, Dan, I sent it to you too and you probably, you probably didn't see it yet. So, the presentation I did on Monday night, I sent to you. Right. Good. So, you have all those figures too. And then you're right, you'll have time as the school committee to weigh in on, I think this is where we want to land as well. So, it will come back to the school committee level as well.
Is that a decision the school committee makes or the city?
Yes. Because you're going to vote, it's like, almost like the budget, like we do with the budget. It will come here, we'll talk about it, we'll debate it. You'll decide what you want to move forward to city council for the referendum. Then, city council approves the referendum going to the public. So, it's very similar to the budget. What's going to be difficult about this is we're going to be running budget and new high school building at the same time. But, you know.
It's two different things though, Katie. There's local.
Yes.
That is the twenty-five to thirty-two thousand, million. And then there's the state, that the state is figuring from all these spaces that we need. And they'll fund that on it. So, two different figures that are coming. And we still have no idea what the state is saying.
The state is getting closer. They know we need numbers. They know our timeline, so they're working on that. So, you'll have more
And Auburn voters will see the final locally required amount when we vote on the, in referendum.
For that.
And as Bob Hayes told me at one of the last presentations, the last time for this school was built, the budget was, was denied two or three times
Three times.
Before it finally got approved by the citizens. So, if we're asking too much of the citizens, it won't get approved.
So, we have to balance that. Because you're right, that's how we lost the gymnasium. That's how we lost the cafeteria.
No auditorium.
Right. Or an auditorium.
Yes, Alfreda?
I just have a clarifying question. The three levels, and Bonnie may be able to answer that, those three, I was at that meeting. I was able to attend that particular night because I didn't have another meeting. But there were the three levels that, you know, based on what everybody had to say, is that level one or level two or level three, those three? Are they specifically in its entirety or that, can like level one be changed, tweaked or can
Of course.
We, we're not in any finalized state right now. So, we're still talking about it. We could still add a pool if we wanted to and we could support it.
Wish you could.
I know, I know. But those are the things. We can cut whatever we, the citizens or the commi, the building committee
Yeah.
And the extra committees that we've had going can do.
Thank you.
They're trying to prioritize it, give some sort of list so that as we, as we go through this and then, you know, the community comes back and says, gee, we really like this, or no, let's drop that off, or no, we can't afford that. What are you going to drop? As opposed to directing us what might be taken away or might be added. We've tried to prioritize those in some way and the group, the building committee and those subcommittees have done that.
And one last question. The solar, what, I would assume that the solar would give us a lot of payback down the road. What did you feel about that?
That was cut.
Yeah. It was cut for this reason. There, we don't have enough roof space to put sufficient number of panels to get a reasonable, reasonable return. You could put less than a third of the demand in solar panels on that site. So, you could have gone to an off-site one. But as soon as we went over a third, you had to, you became a, like a utility. I mean, basically, you have to be regulated as a utility. And the service to the building is divided. One-third of our requirement required one service. And if you went beyond that, you acquired a second service and a third service. So, there really going to end up being three services to support the school. It didn't seem to make any economic sense because currently a solar panel lifespan is about 15 years.
Yes, not wrong.
And the payback on so, the, the energy savings that we would get because you would be selling the excess to the, to the grid is being reduced each year now. So, you'd only get 62% of the, of the payback of the refund on the cost of energy when we turned it on, basically. And so, the payback kept going further out. And it, if a solar panel needs to be replaced in 15 years and our payback is 15 years or thereabouts, there was no savings, really. It is green and we like that idea. The concept of geothermal is also green. And if we can, if the citizens will support the idea of geothermal, it's, it's non-visual. You don't see it. It's all drilled in the ground. It provides green energy because we're not having to create it in any way. All we do is move air or fluid through it. So, that would give you climate control throughout the entire structure, which has huge benefits in the utilization of the building, summer, year-round. So, that is, has, has received a higher priority than the solar did.
Well, thank you for that explanation. It makes a lot of sense.
Well, Tom is on the sustainability committee, as you can tell.
One of our major contractors in the city is really putting geothermal in all those new buildings and he's really raving about it. So, might be something we want to think about.
And Alfreda, you can, I don't know if you saw the email I sent today about the city of Portland and solar. They have an off-site solar panel farm in that pays for all of City Hall in Portland's
Gee.
Portland's electricity.
Wow.
Not the electricity of Portland, it was the city hall and some other building.
City hall, right. And that's off-site. It could be any place in the city. And South Portland has one too.
They have three sites in Portland.
And Farmington has one.
As long as they don't turn down the road, turn on us and say, now we're going to charge you. I mean, they can do that. They're doing that with some homeowners, I've heard. So, thank you for that.
Very good. I believe we've had a motion and a second to approving the transfer of the SOS program to the new EL. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Very good. Thank you.
So, the next top, oh, so, the next big event will be January 23rd, public forum. And we're still working on location, but you'll get your community postcard for the invitation and we'll make sure we do Facebook Live again so people can't be in attendance. The next agenda item is the Park Avenue to classrooms. And so, I've added some information here just so that, because I understand from city council, there was questions around enrollment at Park Avenue. So, I just want to give some additional information. Also, I want to give Faith and Bonnie an opportunity to speak. As the architect that would be working on this project attended the finance committee meeting to discuss it more. So, I covered some space needs, but I'm going to jump to the Park Avenue. I shared this before, that this is the enrollment history on Park Avenue. Just to give folks a feel of, you know, it's had a high of 391 and it's had a low of 367. So, it, it varies depending on enrollment. The other thing I added is I did three years out this way. I did this year, next year, and the year after. And I took the kindergarten number this year at 47. So, this is the current year. And so, you can see the, the total, the number of teachers and so forth. So, they're at averaging 20 per classroom with their 18 teachers at 359, which does not include their pre-K. So, going through their enrollment, they're at 383 when you include their pre-K. The next one is next year, so just taking that 47. They do average around 50 kindergartens. I looked at the numbers in the last eight years and they average 50 kindergarteners. So, I kept the 47 and moved them up. As you can see, that has them at 348 students, 18 teachers. They're still averaging 20. I then went to 2021 where I kept moving the 47 up. So, you see them at 348 with 18 teachers, still averaging 20. Now, what I also did, because I heard this question from city council, so I, I anticipated, Alfreda, you would have these questions?
Yes, thank you.
Right. So, the question around superintendents agreements. So, just so the public does know, we receive superintendent's agreements every year. We receive them for families that live in Auburn to go to different schools in Auburn. And we also receive them from families outside the district. Every one of them, I read, I go through it. Sometimes I meet with families, as Roz knows. There's phone calls. Parents also have a right to appeal the commissioner's office if both superintendents deny the approval. So, Auburn overall has 152 superintendent's agreements for students to come to Auburn. Remember, with every superintendent's agreement is subsidy dollars that follow that student. So, if we started a policy where no one could come to Auburn under superintendent's agreement, take that 152, multiply it by approximately $12,000 and that would be, you know, that's the loss, I mean, give or take the subsidy dollars. So, we also, families, they start with us, they move, they want to stay. There's a lot of stories. If we read them, there's a lot of stories. And you understand why people, you know, we're also, in order to help with our truancy rates and our absenteeism in keeping kids in their home school as much as we can, we, we try to honor those requests. We had 50, I'm trying to remember what. Okay. So, we had 50, 152 that came in. We had 50 students go out. I denied 42 to come in, uh, 45 to come in and I denied 15 local. So, that's just to give you a feel of how many we deal with. If you total all of those up, that's quite a few. That Roz processes all of them. We also talked to the superintendent of the district they're coming from or going to. There's, there's a lot of dialogue. Principals are often asked to weigh in. Is this student doing well in our school? Are there concerns? Are there issues? Maybe a new start. A different school might be the answer. And we have to write in the letter to the parent why we're denying the, the move. So, you can see for, within Auburn, the transfers to Park Avenue. I did it by grade level and you can see which schools they're coming from. So, 48 students attend Park Avenue from these various schools. East Auburn, Fairview, Sherwood, Walton, and Washburn have students that attend that school. Added district transfers to Park, these are students that do not, families do not live in Auburn but have requested to attend Park Avenue. We have 15. We also have students in Auburn transfer from Park Avenue. So, not all Park Avenue students are at Park Avenue. They're also at other schools in the district. So, I did that by grade level. So, we have 28 students that are at different schools than Park Avenue. And you can see the breakdown. There's, there are students in East Auburn, Fairview, Sherwood, Walton, and Washburn that should be at Park Avenue, but for various reasons, they remain, they go to different schools. We also had one student from added district transfer from Park. So, I, that was to give you a feel of, because one of the questions is, if you moved all the students that were there on a superintendent's agreement, you'd have room. Well, yes, but then you would be not having room in your other schools. So, where Park Avenue is located, and I, I think I explained this at the finance committee, it is in an area where buses go back and forth and are in close proximity. Sherwood Heights is close to Park Line. Fairview is close to Park Line. Washburn is close to Park Line. I think East Auburn is pretty close to Park Line. So, a lot of the times, there's phone calls if a class size is coming high at any of those schools to say, is there any way we can make some transfers to help support class sizes at these schools? So, we work with transportation, we work with families. So, sometimes we make the decision to put a student at a particular school. We provide the transportation. Majority of them, parents need to provide their own transportation. We do not provide it unless we make the decision to make the move because of class sizes. That often happens at East Auburn School where their kin, they have one kindergarten. They cannot go above 20 students. They've now made a K1 to help their K numbers out. So, we often look at Washburn School to support the overage at East Auburn. So, we have, we're meeting our needs. We're trying to keep families at the schools they started. You hate to have a student who's been at one elementary school through fifth grade. They've moved across town. They don't want them go to their other school in sixth grade. So, we talk those things out. So, as I explained around Park Avenue right now, we're using two meeting spaces for special education programming. And there's a picture of that. We're using two special education spaces for general education programming. Excuse me. And so, where the two classrooms will be built, when this building was designed, just like the new high school, when it's designed, you have to show where you would add addition, additional space. So, when it was designed, it was designed to have two classrooms go on top of the first floor. So, there would no, there would not be a build-out. There is a rubber roof on top of a cement floor. So, that rubber roofing will be pulled up. And then the walls will be built and the classrooms will be made. And so
Clarification on the picture? That's an arrow that has been put in the picture. That does not exist.
It's not a crane.
It's not a crane or anything sitting up there?
No. So, we've met with So we've met with Stephen Blatt. The finance committee members can speak about that meeting around, we reviewed our capital improvement projects around available funding. I want to remind folks that those two classrooms have been part of our capital improvement project plan for future planning. So it's not a new item. It's an item that has been on the list. And so if the finance committee, if Bonnie and Faith or- add information about what the cost is, the funding, I'll let you talk about that.
Stephen, just for clarification, Stephen Blatt is the architect that was hired to build Park Avenue. He has built many additions in many schools here in the Twin Cities. So Stephen came, and he had blueprints, and he had everything for us to look at. And he was the one that shared with us that it's structurally sound, the addition, that the steel is good, that it's a cement floor, which he was-
Slab, that was his huge, huge benefit.
Right, he thought that was a huge benefit. And he, he thought that he could do it, and he had some designs for us to look at. And he thought that he could do it in our timeframe, which is March, May?
June.
June, June to September, maybe a little bit beyond September.
We'll probably have to go into October and perhaps middle. It, it, it will depend. He thinks that because of the slab being there, that we can quickly get the classrooms up during the summer, that the campus will have to be closed during the summer, so that crane, a crane can be there, the steel can be put up. But once it's enclosed, then they'll be working inside. Also, the classrooms underneath, we will be working with Lila and the teachers around where those two classrooms will be located temporarily, while those two classrooms are being finished, because you cannot have class going on underneath them. He was, he, you know, you never know, the builder, maybe we can get it done before school opens, but I don't want to make any promises. So there, there will be some disruption in the beginning, but we'll be working with the staff on making sure that's as minimal as we can make it.
And the playground will be closed for the summer?
It will have to be, yes.
Will the state pay for any of this?
No. We're looking at capital improvement money. And Adam, that's you on capital improvement.
So looking at how we would fund this, we have about $590,000 in CIP funds that are not allocated to a project from past years that we can access. Steve Blatt gave us an estimate for the entire cost of the project, and he thought it was a conservative estimate, meaning he doesn't think it'll be more than this, of $755,000 for the total cost. So between the $590,000, with that, that would leave us to come up with another $165,000. And the plan that we talked about is we could use some of the CIP funds that have already been approved and bonded for projects that would be happening in the summer of '19. And if necessary, we could perhaps delay one or two of the LED lighting projects that we had talked about into the following summer. But if everything goes well, and pricing comes in a little lower than we estimated, it's possible we may be able to do this and still complete every project on our list. So looking at all of that, and saying, if we don't do it in the summer of '19, then we're looking at another whole school year where we can't help with these space needs, it made sense in our discussion to try to, to do this for the summer of '19. And it would be an aggressive schedule. We'd get right on it tomorrow and start getting the ball rolling. But that's what the financing side would look like.
And we had asked Adam to check with the state to see if there were any revolving funds for construction. And the state is not releasing any at this time.
Unfortunately, there's no funding available for that at this time.
So given what's happening in our city with workforce development, and the potential of having new suburban developments going on, all of our schools will be affected and overcrowded as we go along on it. Fairview is looking at a workforce development apartment complex right next door to them. Fairview is going to be needing space. There's one out on Turner Street, somebody told me, going up. And that will affect Washburn and, and East Auburn. So that's an issue there. And there's one more-
Spring Street.
Spring Street, the Troy Street one.
There's also Troy Street, there's those two.
Troy Street, actually, will be the big one on it that will affect us. So we're going to be quickly overcrowded with, with students on it. Some of the workforce housing are one, two, and three bedrooms. So if you get more than one bedroom, you're probably looking at a couple of kids that are going to be in it. So all of our schools are overcrowded. All of the other schools will cost us major money to add on to. This is, is a plus, that we had the foresight to take and have this ready to go for us if we ever needed it. And we need it, so therefore, it's ready.
Sounds good.
Got to do it, got to do it. Just the beginning of the bubble.
And we checked on the bubble. The bubble was a big thing to check on what-
We went over those numbers.
We went over the numbers. I kind of laid it on Adam that I wasn't going to support this. And he said, why? And I laid out a whole mess of things that he quickly took and got answers to. And I think that this is presented to us, this was a good thing for us to do.
All right, I'd entertain a motion to authorize the superintendent of the business manager to enter into a contract with Stephen Blatt Architects to plan the addition of a, of the two classrooms at the Park Avenue Elementary School.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Very good, thank you.
Just as a point of interest, Stephen Blatt graduated from Edward Little in 1964.
64, 63.
He was a year behind, but 64, he graduated. And he's very excited about the new Edward Little High School.
Good. Finance report.
We're watching special ed.
Make a recording of that.
I know, that's it, that's it.
Nothing else looks good, though. We're going to continue to watch special ed.
So that's, that's-
Nothing else out of line for this time of year?
Nope, special ed.
All right. And where are we in special ed? Is it over?
It's over.
Well overestimate?
It's over right now, but anything could change momentarily. It could go up, it could go down. We're over, but that's the nature.
Do you want to explain how we budget and where the overage is?
Yeah, so again, we're looking at, most likely, the out-of-district tuition being over for the reasons that Ryan outlined in his, in his presentation. And so when we budget, we try to budget as accurately as we can of what percentage of days will the students attend? You know, we could budget at 100%, but we know there's not 100% attendance. So we try to come up with a realistic number, and I think we used about 82% this year. And so if we project out the rest of the year at 82% with our current enrollment, we're looking at about $160,000 over on the tuition. If we do it at 100% attendance, which would be the high end, we're looking at about $550,000 overage. So that's the range. But we do feel okay between salary and benefits and some other things, that we can absorb that in the overall budget. But as Bonnie said, we'll continue to monitor it closely, and we update those projections every month.
And, and I do, I mean, to get the average of 82%, what we did is look at the year prior, looking at a history, what has been the percentage of our attendance? So what would be hard is to budget at 100%. That would cost millions to, to do that, and then we would be under. Yes, Ryan?
I went back to 2014 and '15. I went back to the 14, '15, and went from 14, '15, '16.
To get the average of attendance. So it was based on data to get that percentage. So we'll again look at it for this budget, what has been the average.
The current numbers we're banding about, if I'm not mistaken, does not necessarily account for a student that could show up on our doorstep, you know, tomorrow-
We don't know.
That we would end up having to place out of district-
Absolutely correct.
As Ryan has pointed out before. So those are, those are unknowns, and, and they can surprise us and shock us at any point in time. We also have students that leave the district and therefore go off our rolls. So there's a give and take, a yin and a yang that happens throughout the year. And that makes budgeting for special ed extremely inaccurate in the sense of, you can't figure it out. Any further questions on the finance report? Entertained a motion to approve the finance report?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor? Very good. Policy. We have a second reading tonight?
Yes.
Michelle, you're going to lead us through this.
Sure. Just a reminder, the policies that we're looking at for second reading are IKFC, and that's the graduation requirements, and JKAA, use of physical restraint and seclusion. Are there any questions?
These were presented at our last meeting. Any question, Cern? Hearing done. I'd entertain a motion to approve the second reading of the above-listed policies.
So moved.
Second. Thank you, Alfreda. All those in favor? Information, we've had the finance committee report. Let's do the city council update for school items that would impact us in-
The only thing, the only thing that's of substantial news is that there's been, the agricultural committee has proposed ordinance, and we have moved it on to the State Department, a couple of sub-departments within the State Department of Agriculture, to review, make sure that we're abiding by very, a number of changed statutes. So we want to make sure that when we do put this ordinance together and approve it, that we're right on top of what the changes have been, so we don't have to go back and do it over again. So that's all I have to report.
I have a question. It was very nice that you passed out the, the results of our testing. How many councilors kind of scratched their head and said, what do you mean? Yes, we are below state level, but I think it would have been appropriate to have the superintendent go over, like she did for us, what was going on, so that the council could understand it, and not just say, oh, graduation rates have dropped, and on and on with it.
Yeah, what I did was I mentioned the highlights of it, and was not going to go item for item, because that would have been the time.
Right, and I, and I heard you, and I, and you did a good job on it. But I was, and I also was a little surprised that we had been at that meeting on Monday night, and nobody had any questions. And then wham.
Well, I've asked them, I sent them a, an email saying, if you have any questions, please forward them to me, and I can forward them to the superintendent. So we may, if we do, then we may need, you know, a workshop on that. But I just wanted them to keep up to date on what's going on, and go back and forth.
All right. Committees that have met, have we got anyone met? I don't think, we've had many committee meetings since our last meeting, have we? I don't think there have been any. So upcoming means we begin again the new year on January 2nd. Seven o'clock, I don't believe we're-
You're going to have, you're going to have an executive session workshop at 6:00 to review teacher contract and prep for negotiations. And then on January 16th, you will have a work, a workshop. It also will be an executive session with attorney for counsel. So you have two executive sessions in January for your workshop.
While you're giving us Christmas off, right?
Exactly.
That's right.
Take a break.
Take a break.
And I'm putting them at the workshop, because it gets late, and by 9:00, people are tired. And so trying to be understanding of that, and-
Very good. Any future agenda items? Please get them to Katie and myself. And no need for an executive session this evening, so I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Merry Christmas.
Yep, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas. Happy New Year.
Second?
Second.
To clarify, so adjourn. Thank you very much.
Kaliki maka.